Good afternoon. We'll call to order the policy session for September 26, 2023. Thank you for joining us. We'll begin with a roll call.
Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring. Vice Mayor Ansari.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
We'll begin with councilmember follow-up and information requests, and we'll start with the vice mayor if we could bring up her slides.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a busy, busy August and September for the District Seven office. From our Refugee Resource Fair and hiring event that we held in Maryvale to our Back-to-School Resource Fair in Levine, it's hard to recapital, but we tried. Next slide. Mid-September brought two important anniversaries. First, I want to congratulate Councilwoman Guardado on an incredible El Grito celebration, another great event. I know it was your second year in a row hosting. All month long, we'll be celebrating the contributions of Latinos in our city. We recently spotlighted legislators to know and the issues that they are fighting for. Next slide. It also, on a more somber note, marks the one-year anniversary of the tragic death of Mahsa Amini. Her violent murder galvanized thousands of Iranians, led by women and girls in a historic revolution to demand freedom, basic human rights, and an end to 44 years of an oppressive rule of the Islamic Republic in Iran. We honored her by lighting City Hall up in green, white, and red, and we also launched an augmented reality feature of the mural that's on Second Street and Roosevelt. This mural was commissioned by my office last year in partnership with the Roosevelt Row CDC, and now residents across Phoenix can go and check it out and learn more about the humanitarian crisis in Iran. Next slide. Community safety continues to be a top priority for our team, and it's the number-one issue in our inbox, social media channels, and what I hear most from residents. We now have quarterly meetings in Levine in partnership with District Eight, Downtown Phoenix, and will host a coffee chat at the Desert West Community Center in Maryvale on October 7th. From gun safety to who to call when you see someone experiencing a mental crisis, our residents want to be well-informed, and we're working hard to continue making sure that they are. Next slide. One thing that I'm really excited for is that we are launching free soccer classes at Smith Park. This is a community that has been asking us for different and more variety of amenities to be offered at their community center. So through our participatory budget funds, we partnered with TuSo Soccer to offer classes to kids aged eight to 14. We have 38 little ones signed up, and so excited to activate this park. This is a great segue to an important deadline that's coming up, which is $10,000 Activate Your Park grant applications, which are due on October 6th. Next and final slide. As we round out the month, we're celebrating National Drive Electric Week right now, September 22nd to October 1st, 2023. My comms director made me make an embarrassing TikTok, if you guys want to check that out. October will ring in Phoenix's event season. Every weekend is full on our calendar. From Noche y Blanco to Phoenix Pride Parade and many District Seven events in between, we'll be enjoying the cooler weather and community conversations all over the district. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. We'll next turn to Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I am excited to come back and report that we had an incredible Sister Cities delegation to Ennis Ireland to celebrate the 35th anniversary of our Sister Cities relationship. What an amazing city. The warmth of the people was incredible. Their streets are so clean, and I will tell you, as often as it is sunny here, it rains there. I figure if we could work out some kind of trade for a little sunshine over there and a little bit of their rain, that would be an awesome trade. In addition, while we were there, we were able to celebrate the passing--she passed a year ago, but Mary Hill Connor was a longtime Sister City Chair of the Ennis Sister Cities Committee, and we had a mass in her honor to celebrate her life and all that she did for the Sister City relationship with Ennis and bringing the Irish Cultural Center here. So I really was an honor to be able to lead that delegation over there and celebrate her life and 35 years of a relationship with Ennis Ireland, who, by the way, had the first duty-free airport in the world because of, I guess I was going to say how far or how far not the planes could travel, they had to have--they had a duty-free airport there. So, and in addition, we were blessed to be able to celebrate our, my husband and I, our 30th anniversary, wedding anniversary while we were there, so it made it even extra special. I would like to remind folks that this Friday at the DoubleTree Inn at Metro Center, we'll be having the District One Community Breakfast. It'll--check-in starts at 7:30, and the event starts at 8:00 AM, and we have invited Councilwoman Hodge Washington to come and discuss the geo-bond facts with our community members. In addition, a little reminder that the double 10-day celebration will be on October 7th at ASU West from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We will have traditional foods, carnival games, the night market, traditional dances and performances, and we will end the evening with a fireworks show, so I hope you all will join us at that event. Otherwise, it's good to be back home. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll go to Councilwoman Hodge Washington, and I think she has slides, and then we'll go to Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quickly, I'm going to do a District Eight update. Next slide. One of the things that's most important to my office is ensuring that we are here for the constituents, so I wanted to start off with the slide of our constituent cases. Since taking office, we have had 159 cases open and closed 134. So we have 25 outstanding. I really appreciate the constituents that have reached out to our office and allowed us to help them in this matter. Some are a variety of issues, some a little more complicated than others, but please know that we are doing what we can to ensure that we are able to open and close the cases in a timely manner. And my office remains a resource for any constituent's needs. Next slide, please. Since our last policy meeting, I made it through my 100 days in office. I marked that by releasing my first 100-day reports. It included some highlighted constituent wins, priorities, some fast facts, meet the team, and much, much more. Those that are interested can check it out on the D8 website. Next slide. In August, we also held a series of three community meetings at South Mountain Community College, Sora High--sorry, Sora Library, and the Levine Educational Center to launch a community initiative called Energize Eight. The intent of this initiative is to provide neighborhood leaders and community members with an organized forum in which to voice their concerns. I want to again say thank you to all of the neighborhood leaders, community members, and department representatives who attended these meetings. Specifically, we had attendance from our community and economic development team, our Office of Homeless Solutions, Neighborhood Services, Parks and Recreation, Police Department, Public Works, Public Transit, and Street Transportation. I want to say a special thank you again to all the department representatives that attended. The community really benefited from having the opportunity to speak directly with those members of our city staff that helped make our city function and answer their questions directly. They provided the residents in attendance with an update of what to expect on the top three projects in their respected areas, and we did a little brainstorming. We found out what their concerns were, and we received their solutions. We are in the process of vetting those conversations and hope to reel those back out soon. If you haven't already, I encourage all residents of District Eight to sign up for the newsletter to stay abreast on the Energize Eight initiative. Next slide. Been out and about a little bit. I just wanted to highlight a few things. Last month, I took part in the Clean Energy, Clean Luxe Press Conference, and that's, that campaign is committed to educating community members on the impact of air pollution and lung health and promoting the adoption of clean energy practices. I also had the privilege of speaking at the South Mountain Community College Faculty and Staff Fall 2023 Convocation, and I'm really excited to see what South Mountain has in store for the upcoming semester. It is an informational pinpoint in our community, and I definitely want to make sure that we have the resources our community needs in order to make progress. And then last week, I attended the Congressional Black Caucus Foundation's Annual Legislative Conference. While I was there, I had the pleasure of having several meetings with the Arizona Congressional Delegation, as well as the Federal Department liaisons. In those meetings, I continued to stress the importance of increasing the opportunities for housing attainability, the need for additional resources to address our growing homeless and unsheltered population, and the benefits of boosting economic development in District Eight. I'm here to advocate and continue to advocate for the residents of District Eight. Next slide, please. And then lastly, just wanted to pinpoint, we have Gain Day coming up, which is Getting Arizona Involved in Neighborhoods. It's a day for Arizonas to join forces and promote awareness, safety, and neighborhood unity. I'm so excited to participate in my first official Gain Day, which will be the third Saturday in October, and I invite all the neighborhoods to come together and make our community a safer and better place to live. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. So just, first and foremost, we're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, and I was very proud to be able to hold the second annual El Grito event here in Downtown Phoenix. We had over 12,000 people attend this event. Just want to give a huge shout-out to our special partners, who are Arvisu Advertising Promotion, La Indiscreta FM, and Phoenix Sister Cities. Special shout-out to Rita and to Chris Mackey, who definitely helped us in this process. We had a lot of people come out. People were very excited. We were able to shut down the street and then welcome everyone to Downtown Phoenix to celebrate, to celebrate our culture and have an amazing event. We spoke with police right after the event, and we had zero incidents. So we're very excited on how we continue to promote these type of events and how much of a great success that they were. We had some really key sponsors that made this very successful, Chicanos por la Causa, Greenlight Communities, and other folks that came out and helped us with this. So thank you, everyone, for, for your hard work. Kudos to my team, to Melina and Emmanuel and the whole team that made this happen from the District Five office. And also, a big thank you to Mayor Gallego for attending and to Councilwoman Pastor for also being there. And I know that District Seven was also their table link, so thank you guys all so much for coming out. This week on Thursday, continue with the theme of Hispanic Heritage Month. I want to invite everyone for our third annual Mexican Baseball Fiesta in Maryvale at the American Family Fields of Phoenix. This is again on Thursday. Doors are going to open at 6:00 PM. It's at 53rd Avenue and Indian School, so we're hoping to have family join us. And this is incredibly special because as you have the baseball game happening, so the fans that want to come and see their native teams from Mexico can come out and watch the game. And for folks, you know, that want to come and listen to some live music, we're going to have some live bands playing at the same time. So it's a very unique experience that everyone will be able, be able to see. It's been very successful the last two years, and we know that Thursday will also be a huge success. And we also want to give a big thank you to our city management and city council for their approval of their first-ever Indigenous Peoples' Day city holiday on Monday, October 9th. We acknowledge the city of Phoenix is located within Native land, specifically the homeland of, of the Odam and Pipash peoples and their ancestors, who have inhabited this landscape from the time in Memorial to present day. We appreciate all Indigenous peoples' contributions to our city. And then again, we have a very busy October. Gain Day will be busy for District Five. We hope you can join a Getting Arizona Involved in Neighborhoods event near you. So we have a couple of events. 9:00 AM, West Plaza Neighborhood Association at La Pradera Park on that day. 10:00 AM, Northern Maynor Block Watch. 4:00 PM, Washington Park. Family Fright Night at the Washington Activities Center, pretty awesome. We have kids come out. We do a contest. Everyone dresses up. I think this is just a great opportunity for kids to be able to wear the costumes more than once, so we're very excited for that. And then at 6:00 PM, the Maryville Drive-Thru Boo at the American Family Fields of Phoenix in the Southern Lot. We usually, we usually get Michael Myers to come out and do some good stuff with the kids, so we're very excited for this and for all of our partners that make this happen. Also at 5:00 PM, Royal Palm Fall Festival at Royal Palm Park. And all of this is going to be taking place on the 21st of October. So excited for all of these Gain Events, and we continue to keep busy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. Waiting for my slides. Well, as I, as they're pulling them up. Join me at Golados for a coffee chat next Wednesday, October 4th. Streets and Neighborhood Services departments will be providing updates and answering any questions you may have. There will be free coffee and a raffle. Next slide. The new light rail line. There's a new light rail route being proposed from Central and Indian School to Desert Sky Mall Transit Center. Attend a public meeting this Wednesday at Desert West Community Center to provide impact on the route, and I'm anticipating there will be more community meetings. Obviously, we have talked about Hispanic Heritage Month, September 25th to October 15th. I would like to thank Councilwoman Guardado for hosting the second annual El Grito event. It was very fun. The Hispanic and Latino community has contributed immensely to Phoenix's economic and social growth. We represent a vibrant and ever-growing community, and we are proud, and we will celebrate. Frank Barrios Legacy. This one's a little emotional, so I will just keep, try to keep on task. Frank Barrios passed away two weeks ago. I knew him for my entire life. He inspired me to become a community leader. He leaves behind a great legacy to the city of Phoenix for his lifetime of service. May 30th is Frank Barrios Day in Phoenix. Mayor Gallego and I presented Frank a proclamation a few months ago. Prop 400, heading to 2020-14 ballot in Maricopa County. So if you have a chance, please attend any meetings that we are having if you would like to know more about Prop 400. As you know, it, it has funded almost every, every major transportation project in the Valley, and I provide, I continue advocating for Prop 400. Thank you to our student volunteers. As you can see, I was busy this summer. A quick shout-out to our student volunteers, Michael, Abby, Derek, and Videncia, helped with special projects, research, social media, and events. I'm excited to see what endeavors these kids or these students pursue in the future. Back-to-school backpack and shoe drive, we gave out over 1,000 backpacks, as you can see from my office, and then the notebooks, and then us there at the event. 500 pairs of shoes were given away, so I thank everybody who donated shoes, backpack, and supplies. National Voter Registration Day. I hope, I wish that on that day, Taylor Swift was in town because she encouraged the community, or, or most importantly, the, those that are active in voter registration to vote. And so we were able to see a shutdown of those wanting to vote of the system, and I am very proud at the fact that she is encouraging people to vote. We had a youth job fair. 10-plus city departments and Valley employers participated. Over 100 youth were screened and applied for jobs. I'd like to thank Valley Metro, U-Haul, Phoenix Fire, Street Transportation Department, Phoenix Police, and more. Thank you for those employers and recruitment teams for showing up for these 100 youth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Busy council. Any additional updates? I will just add, in addition to Frank Barrios, we lost a lot of great friends of the Phoenix family, including Darcy Renfro, Sue Glaw, and John Hoops, and so many more, so we will keep their work in our mind as, as we move forward, and miss them very much. October 14th is a great opportunity to join the city of Phoenix and weigh in on the general plan, and then we have election coming up this November. So if you know anyone who's not registered, please encourage them to do so. With that, we will move to our agenda item number one. Will the city clerk please start us off?
The title of the following ordinance and resolution number on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance Number S50192.
Wonderful, and we don't need an additional roll call. Vice Mayor, do we have a staff presentation? Or go straight to motion? All right. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Move to approve item one.
We have a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. As I shared last week, I am clearly voting to repeal our ordinance to bring the city into compliance with the AG's ruling. However, I continue to be extremely, extremely disappointed that current state law prevents us from making our own community safety decisions. Gun violence is the leading cause of death among children in the United States. I'm sickened by this reality and frustrated that as city leaders, we are prohibited, and we have a chokehold on the fact that we are not able to do anything substantial to reduce gun violence. Reselling guns that have been used in crimes does not keep us safe, nor does it provide the city with any overwhelming stream of revenue. In fact, as a state, we lose billions of dollars each year to gun violence. While we wait for more action at the state level, I am encouraged by a recent announcement by President Biden to establish the first-ever Office of Gun Violence Prevention. This is a, an idea and a proposal that came forward from the first Gen Z member of Congress, because again, this is an issue that affects younger generations more than anyone. So as lawmakers prepare for 2024, I urge them to remove these restraints on the city of Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. Mayor, I originally supported the ordinance because I believe we came up with a way to dispose of guns and assist a nation under siege. I stand with Ukraine. However, the Attorney General has determined that our ordinance is not legal, and therefore I will vote yes to repeal the ordinance and cancel the agreement. But I do agree with the vice mayor. Guns provoke violence, and we've got to find a way to deal with it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. If the legislature truly prioritizes public safety, then I implore them to pass meaningful legislation that will help us reduce gun violence in our cities. Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I also echo the sentiments. I do believe that the city needs an avenue in which to dispose of firearms in a way that they deem more appropriate. I appreciate the legislature's attempt to create a holistic approach to this, but we should be given an opportunity to make the decisions that are best for the residents of our city. So although I agree with the final decision to repeal the ordinance, I'm doing so under the finding of the Attorney General's office, which deems that it's inappropriate. So we are trying to correct what is incorrect.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
We next go to our second agenda item, which is related to the budget, and I will turn it over to our city manager, Jeff Barton.
Mayor, members of the council, I will be very brief before I turn it over to Budget and Research Director Amber Williamson. I just want to take a few moments to recognize you and thank you for all of your hard work, diligence, and leadership over the past 38 months since COVID showed up in the city of Phoenix back in February of 2020. You've done a lot to ensure continuity of services for our residents. You've also invested heavily in our employees, and today we stand before you with a budget report that illustrates that on full display at the end of last fiscal year, that, that ended in June 30. We are bringing to you a, a ending balance that's $18 million higher than we anticipated. This is the cornerstone and the building block upon which we will build the 24-25 budget. And so I just want to thank you for your hard work, your effort, and, and your belief in staff. And I also want to recognize my former department, who Amber always likes to say affectionately that that's where the magic happens, because without the work that they do and the accuracy that they produce, I don't think we'd all be having some of the conversations that, that we're able to have. Now, I do also want to acknowledge that, you know, even though we've managed to nimbly manage COVID and all of the other nastiness that's come along with it, we do have a pretty tumultuous, I think, next 12 months as the state continues to take revenue away from us. And I think it's important that we have those discussions as often as possible, and I also think it's important to be open and transparent to our community, so they also know what we as a city face as we try to deliver vital services to our residents. So with that, I turn it over to Amber.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Mayor, members of the council and the public, I'm pleased to be here today to present to you our 22-23 general fund budget results. Today, I'm also going to go over some budget challenges that we're going to be facing as we move forward in development of next year's budget. I'll talk about next steps in our budget development process, requesting council action today to adopt a 24-25 budget calendar, and then I can answer any questions. So for 22-23, our general fund resources were estimated at $1,831.9 million, represented by the blue bar. We ended the year about $14.8 million higher, or eight tenths of a percent more than what we estimated, at $1,846.7 million. Our general fund expenses for last fiscal year, the cost to deliver programs and services to the community, were estimated at $1,627.8 million. We ended the year about $4 million less than that, two tenths of a percent under the estimate, at $1,623.8 million, resulting in a general fund ending balance that was estimated to be $204.1 million. We ended $18.8 million more than what we estimated, at $222.9 million. As our city manager Jeff indicated, that amount will remain in our general fund balance, and we will take it into account when we construct our status for next fiscal year. Some budget challenges we're going to be facing as we move forward. Of primary concern is the state's continued action to diminish our tax base. This was most recently done when the governor signed Senate Bill 1131 that eliminates an ongoing revenue stream, residential rental sales tax, effective January of '25. This is going to have a negative ongoing impact to several city funds, including the general fund, public safety specialty funds, which includes Prop 1 and Prop 301, which were voter-approved sales tax funds to support public safety, as well as voter-approved Parks and Preserves and Transportation 2050. Additionally, a couple of years ago, the governor at the time, Ducey, signed Senate Bill 1828 to reduce individual income tax rates to the current flat tax of 2.5%. We rely on the state's Joint Legislative Budget Committee to provide estimates for state shared income tax, and unfortunately, they underestimated the negative impact of that policy change. For residential rental sales tax, to give you just an overview of what the estimated ongoing loss in revenue is to the city, starting in fiscal '24-25, this is a partial year impact to the general fund, roughly $19 million, 4.7 million to public safety specialty funds, 1.6 million to our Parks and Preserves Fund, and 11.1 million to Transportation 2050, for an overall estimated revenue loss of $36 million. First full-year impact will be in '25-26. As you can see on the screen, roughly estimated $47 million lost to the general fund, $90 million to all funds. If we look over a forecast horizon, you can see through fiscal '27-28, it's just over $300 million we're anticipating to lose in revenue due to the state's action. For state shared income tax, as a reminder to the council, this is allocated 100% to our general fund. It's based on collections from two years prior. The Joint Legislative Budget Committee did notify legislative members in a memo in June of 2023, and I quote, "Significant decline in '22-23 general fund revenue collections. Individual income tax payments are the primary reason for the shortfall due to implementation of the lower individual income tax rates." '24-25 impact to the general fund, from what I presented to all of you in February in the last multi-year forecast, is $36 million. So on top of the $19 million for next fiscal year in residential rental loss, I will also be building in a decline of $36 million for state shared income tax. JLBC will be providing updated projections again in October and January. I am anticipating those projections are probably going to be more conservative than they were last year. I will be using those projections to update our multi-year forecasts that I'll bring to you in February. to you in February. Other budget challenges we're going to be facing, not just for the general fund but for all funds, is ensuring that we have resources sufficient to pay for long-term ongoing costs of the class and comp study, as well as the labor increases both approved by city council. We're also going to begin negotiating again with our labor groups in December. We also know we have aging city facilities, equipment, as well as vehicles that need to be repaired or replaced. And unfortunately, like most other things, those costs are escalating. We know we have continual requests from the community for either expanded our new programs and services, which oftentimes bring with those increased costs. We have increases in our actuary required contributions to our city trust funds. We have a fiduciary responsibility to fund those trust funds, including workers' compensation, long-term disability, our self-insurance reserve, and also pension. Also, for the 2023 proposed general obligation bond program going to the voters in November, if those were to pass those projects, we would anticipate needing to build in new ongoing operating costs, roughly in '2526 going forward, primarily for fire, parks, and library. That will put additional pressure on our general fund. And potential costs impacts from the Department of Justice and Investigation of the Police Department that will also have to be accounted for in our general fund. Just spent a moment on pension. I talk about this often with the council because it represents about 25% of our operating budget. We are going to continue to see increases in pension. What you can see on the screen, the red bars represent fire pension expense, blue bars represent police pension costs. These are actuals going back from fiscal '2122 to '1718. Moving forward through fiscal '2728, based on projections from the PSPRS actuary, we are expecting to see increases anywhere from $85 to $95 million over that forecast period. We're going to be getting an updated actuary report from the Public Safety Actuary based on June 30, '23. We will get that in December. We'll use that to forecast pension costs going forward. Next steps in our budget development process, we are just wrapping up our annual salary and benefit projection review. Budget and research staff has been working hard with all city departments to as accurately as we can estimate salary and benefits. Next, over October and November, we're going to move into our three-plus-nine technical reviews. This is where we really look at the line item expenditures with all departments trying to identify savings where we can, establishing realistic estimates of what it's going to cost to deliver current service levels. December will be central reviews. This is where we evaluate expenditures for citywide line items such as fuel, electricity, and pension. All along this period of time, we'll be developing new revenue estimates, updating our econometric model that we use to project sales tax, to combine together to bring to you a preliminary general fund status for '2425 and multi-year forecast in February. For our '2425 budget calendar, coming up next to November, we will update our Fund Phoenix tool, make that available in both English and Spanish to residents. This year, we're going to be linking it to our inventory programs document, providing that document earlier in the fiscal year so it's available to all of you as well as our residents. February 27, the general fund status and multi-year forecast will be presented to you. March 19, we'll bring the preliminary trial budget and capital improvement program. In April, we'll take the budget to the community like we always do to solicit feedback. May 7, the city manager's proposed budget is scheduled to be presented. May 21, we'll ask for council action on the budget. That's an important step, as I always say. Without that, we can't move to what you're legally required to do, which is to adopt the budget formally. Tentative adoption on May 29, final budget adoption on June 12, and July 1 with property tax adoption. So today, council, we are requesting action to adopt the '2425 budget calendar. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we maybe turn to the Vice Mayor for a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council, comments and questions? I would add to the challenges that are upcoming. Unfortunately, a potential federal government shutdown. We are home to many federal employers and employees who are important members of our community, from our airport to scientific research in our downtown. The federal government's very active, and many of those employees would not receive a paycheck during the shutdown. So that could cost, I believe, the federal economy billions, and we'd certainly feel the impact here as well. I hope they are able to keep the deal that they had in place. Also appreciate the governor's commitment to try to work with municipalities affected by this recent year's budget. This is a very significant impact to us and makes it more difficult for us to address challenges from hiring police officers to fighting homelessness and building more affordable housing. So we look forward to working with the governor and state of Arizona on this important issue facing our city. Any other comments? And this can be a voice vote. All those in favor of adopting the budget calendar say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, and now we go to the main event, redistricting. Every 10 years, we go through the process of redistricting. We want to welcome up our deputy city manager, Ginger Spencer, who has been leading this process, along with our former city attorney who came out of retirement to help us, city clerk Denise Archibald, and our mapping consultants, Priti and Sam. So we'll turn it over to Ginger.
Mayor Gallego, thank you for that introduction. Mayor and council, we are here to talk today about redistricting 2023. And as the mayor stated, this process is required by the city to be conducted every 10 years. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for your leadership, your input and support of this process. I'd also like to thank our city manager, Jeff Barton, and our assistant city manager, Lori Baze, for their leadership and support as well. If we can get our presentation up. So it takes a village on the redistricting process. And so I would like to acknowledge and thank all of the staff and members of the city's redistricting team. You can see here the departments that were represented, including our city clerk department taking the lead. We had national redistricting consultants. We had our local consultant, as well as representatives from our law department, ITS GIS section, our Neighborhood Services Department, the Communications Office, as well as Phoenix TV, and then the chiefs of staff and members of our mayor and city council offices, as well as our interpreters who assisted throughout the process. As the mayor stated, here with me today to give this presentation is our city clerk Denise Archibald. We also have Chris Meyer, who is our former city attorney and former city clerk. And Chris has been involved with all of the city's redistricting processes since inception. And also our consultants, we've got Priti Mather and Sam Mather. And so lastly, before I turn the presentation over to our city clerk, I want to thank all of the residents who attended and participated in our round one and round two community meetings. And I also want to acknowledge and thank all those who submitted maps, as well as comments throughout the process. And with that, I'll turn it over to our city clerk.
Thank you, Ginger. Mayor, members of the council, as Ginger mentioned, the city council district boundaries must be redrawn every 10 years to reflect the changes in population based on the most recent census. The most recent federal census was in 2020, which triggered then this current redistricting process. Staff put together a schedule and plan for redistricting, which used the same process as years prior in 1990, 2000, and 2010. The schedule and plan were approved by council on February 1 of 2023. Once the schedule and plan were approved, then a procurement process was initiated to obtain a redistricting consultant with expertise in census data analysis and in redrawing council district boundaries, and to ensure a fair and impartial process. The redistricting consultant selected through the procurement process and approved by council was Arkbridge Consulting and Training with Sam and Priti Mather from the Washington DC area. Once we got the redistricting consultants on board, we created with the consultant a dedicated email and also a dedicated website for this redistricting process. The dedicated email was for public comments or questions throughout the entire process, phoenixredistricting@phoenix.gov. The dedicated website, phoenixredistricting.com, has all the information related to redistricting, including the description, what was redistricting, why are we doing redistricting, the requirements for the redistricting process, information about the process itself, overview of past process and current process, including information about the community meetings, which included the schedule, and then also, once we had the meetings, all of the videos for each meeting, and also the presentations that were presented at each meeting. Once the maps were developed, those were also posted on our website, and census data was also added to the website so persons could go and look precinct by precinct to all the census data. The website also had a page for public comments to be submitted. Over 300 public comments were submitted throughout the process, and the majority were through this website. The website was available in English and in Spanish, and all of the materials posted there were as well. We also created extensive materials that were presented at each of our community meetings and also used for outreach. That included business cards with the QR code for the website, frequently asked questions in English and Spanish, meeting schedule flyers, maps, handouts, posters, comment sheets for persons to use during the meetings. All of our materials were presented, and were in English and in Spanish. Once we created our website and our materials, we initiated an outreach plan with the Communications Office, and also with the help of the council offices, Neighborhood Services, and many other departments, we were able to get out the word about the redistricting process. We did news releases, articles in the Phoenix Newsroom. We posted information on phoenix.gov on the homepage sliders. We had YouTube, also information there, including all of the videos. For the videos that we had for each of the meetings, we had over 650 views. For social media posts, we had over 155,000 views. We had resident newsletters through the PAYS, Phoenix at Your Service, and other digital newsletters. We also held two rounds of community meetings. We had round one in May and June, where we introduced the process, how people could participate, the information about the website, and then we had opened it up for people to create their own maps. The residents could create their own maps through August 1, with mapping tutorials and videos online that had over 200 views for how to create your own map. We also had round two meetings for the community. At that round two meeting, the consultant presented two alternative plans for input, and then we received more input from the community on those two alternatives. And now, the consultant has evaluated all the community comments, the maps, and now they have developed a proposed map. And with that, I will turn it over to Chris Meyer to talk about the requirements for redistricting.
Thank you, Denise. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. There are two primary overriding legal requirements related to redistricting. The first of those, as has been mentioned, is that the population in the districts must be substantially equal so that every person's vote has equal weight. If population is not equal in the districts, the weight of an individual's vote is less in a district with greater population than it would be in one with less population. For the city of Phoenix redistricting efforts throughout the past, the goal has been to achieve population in each district within 1% of the average, the total population divided by the eight council districts, and to keep the total deviation between the highest and lowest district at less than 5%. In addition to the requirements of equal population, federal law requires the treatment, fair treatment of minorities in the voting rights. In addition to the two legal requirements, there are several other guidelines used in the US regarding redistricting that have been recognized by the US Supreme Court as appropriate. The city uses the following guidelines in its processes. First, recognition of public preferences regarding communities of interest. What the communities of interest are, whether they want those communities kept together, or whether they want them split between council districts. Geographic contiguity and compactness. Preservation of the core of the current districts. Radical changes to a district should not be made unnecessarily so that the general geographic configuration and characteristics of the districts are preserved. Continuity of representation. This recognizes the voter's choice and who they've elected to represent the district and to keep those incumbents in the districts that elected them. And finally, preservation of political subdivisions, trying to match other subdivisions, political election districts whenever possible. And the city has achieved that process throughout history of redistricting by using the county voting precincts as building blocks. Those are the same things that are used to build the districts for the legislative district, Congress, and others, so that we then have as much consistency in those lines as we possibly can. But just one thing to note about these principles. In specific situations, they commonly result in conflicts on one point or another, and so it requires balancing and prioritization of the guidelines in developing a final plan. With that, I'll now hand it over to Priti Mather of Arkbridge Consulting, who will now present the consultant's final report and the proposed recommended plan.
Thank you, Chris. Good afternoon, Mayor and the council. I'm from Arkbridge Consulting, and I'm going to present the process that Chris just explained. So on this slide that you're seeing, we have the current council districts. Our goal was first to see what do we need to do, and for that, we processed the census 2010 data, and we looked at the population of the city of Phoenix. Back in 2010, the ideal population or the target population was 180,704. But with 2020 census, the city of Phoenix grew by 162,000, making the population to be 1.6 million. And with that, our target population for each district grew to 201,017. That means that for each district, we needed to have 20,000 people more. So in 2010, our maximum deviation, which is the difference between the most and the least populated, was 4.74%, which was within the requirements. But with 2020, the districts that, as they are, the maximum deviation rose to 14.45%, which meant that our current council districts were no longer in compliance, and that we had to look at alternative district boundaries. On this slide, what you're seeing is the city of Phoenix total population by race and ethnicity and by current council districts. So the dotted line that you see on top is the target line, which I told you is 201,017. And here, we are showing the bars that District 1 was very close, closes to the target. And then you can see that some districts were over and some were under. You can see D 2, D 5, D 7, and D 8 were over the bar, which meant that we had to reduce the population in these districts and increase the population in the districts which are under the bar, like D 3, D 4, D 6. So with that, and also the color-coded bars show you the population in each district. So with this, it was evident to us that we have to create alternative plans, and we have to follow all the rules and regulations, the redistricting guidelines that Chris described. So with that, I show you the current districts, and I also want to show you the recommended plan. And we have the maps for each one of them, and I'm going to show you the statistics. The current districts, as we showed you in the previous slide, the maximum deviation is 14.45%, which meant that the current districts are no longer in compliance. In the recommended plan table that you see on the right-hand side, you're seeing that the maximum deviation is 4.06%, which is within the requirements. And if you look at individual districts, we have made all attempts to meet the guidelines. Now, having shown you the map and the statistics, I now want to take you to the majority population requirements, the voting rights requirement, where we need to ensure that all the minorities are represented properly. So when we look at the current districts, we looked at the total population, and we found that there are four districts which are majority Hispanic districts, and there are four districts which are majority non-Hispanic white districts. Then we looked at the total population for the recommended districts, and we have been able to maintain the 4-4. So here, we have four Hispanic majority districts and four non-Hispanic white majority districts. Then what we did was, we looked at the voting age population to see if we were able to maintain the same proportion. to see if we were able to maintain the same proportion. So on this current slide, you see the current districts with the 4-4, four Hispanic, and four non-Hispanic white. And then we looked at the recommended plan, and we are able to maintain the four districts at the voting age population level as well. Now, I want to show you district-by-district analysis. District 1, there are no changes, so we are able to keep the district as it is currently. District 2, we have a total of four changes. And if you look at these red boxes on this slide, there are three in the southwest part of the district, and there is one in the southeast part of the district. And I will explain the changes on the next slide. So here, if you look at this, the red boxes and the arrows, you're going to see three precincts, Bluefield, Grover's, and Vicky Up. So Bluefield and Grover's precincts are currently split in Districts 2 and 3, and the recommended plan is assigning them to D3. And since D3 needed population, we also assigned the Vicky Up precinct to District 3. And the Bluefield precinct, the part of D2 portion, which is now going to D3, I'm just going to tell you the streets so that you have a reference. 101 Freeway to Union Hills Drive and 15th Avenue to 7th Avenue. The Grover's precinct, the D2 portion going to D3, it's from Union Hills Drive to Bell Road and 15th Avenue to 7th Avenue. And for Vicky Up, it's 101 Freeway to Union Hills Drive and 7th Avenue to Cave Creek. Now we move on to the next part of D2. Hillary precinct is currently split in D2 and D3, and now it's being completely assigned to D2. So the D3 portion going to D2 is bounded by Thunderbird Road to Sweetwater Avenue and Tatum Boulevard to 56th Street. So those were the changes for D2. Now we move on to D3. We have seven changes, and we have already talked about the three changes in the northwestern part, which are Bluefield, Grover's, and Vicky Up. And we have also spoken about the northeastern part, where we have the Hillary precinct. Now what we will talk about is the three changes in the southwestern part of the district. So here, we have the Glen precinct. The Glen precinct is currently in D3, and it's now being assigned to D6. Sunny High precinct, the next block that you see on the slide, that is the part of Sunny High precinct, which is currently in D5, and it's being assigned to D3. So that is bounded by Dunlop Avenue to Northern Avenue and 19th Ave. to 15th Ave. And then we have the Townley precinct, which is completely being assigned to D3. It's currently in D5. So that precinct is bounded by Dunlop Avenue to Butler Drive and I-17 Freeway to 19th Avenue. With these changes for D3, we now move on to D4. D4 sits in the middle of the city, and we have a total of six changes. On this slide, we are highlighting in the red boxes the areas where we are proposing changes. So there are two changes in the north-central part, then two in the southwestern part, one in south-central and one in southeast part of the district. And we'll go through each of these and describe the changes. So if you look at the north-central part of the district, we have the Marlet precinct, which is currently in D5 and is now being assigned to D4. And the Marlet precinct is bounded by Glendale Avenue to Bethany Home Road and 19th Avenue to 7th Avenue. Now, right below the Marlet precinct is part of Solano, which is currently in D5, and that is being assigned to D4. And this D5 portion going to D4 is bounded by Bethany Home Road to Missouri Avenue and 19th Ave. to 15th Ave. Moving on to the southeast part of the district, we have Creighton precinct, and this precinct is currently in D8, and it's now being assigned, it's now being assigned to D4. And the streets that Creighton is bounded by, Thomas to McDowell Road and SR 51 Freeway to 28th Street. Moving on to the south-central part of the district, we have the Greenwood precinct. Greenwood precinct is currently in D7, but now it's being split in D4 and D7. And if you look at the portion that is being assigned, you can see Thomas Road to I-17 Freeway and 27th Ave. to 19th Ave. Moving on to the southwestern part of the district, we have two precincts, which were currently in D4 and D7, and now they are being completely assigned to D7. So the Culver precinct was in D4, and it's now being assigned to D7, and it's bounded by Encanto Boulevard to McDowell Road and 59th Ave. to 51st Ave. And then Marble Creek precinct, it was split in 4 and 7, but now it's being completely assigned to D7. And the portion of D4 going to D7 is bounded by McDowell Road to I-10 Freeway and 59th Ave. to 51st Ave. Now we move on to D5. There are a total of eight changes. Five changes are in the northeast part of the district, and those we discussed when we talked about D3 and Townley and Sunny High. And so we talked about it on the previous slide. Now we are going to talk about the three changes, which are on the southwestern part of the district, which are the precincts of Cora, Pena, and Desert Sky. And here they are on this slide. You can see Cora, and the Cora precinct is currently in D7, and it's now going to be assigned to D5. And it's bounded by Osborne Road to Thomas Road and 91st Ave. to 83rd Ave. Then the Desert Sky precinct is being assigned to D5, and that is bounded by Thomas Road to McDowell Road and 83rd Ave. to 75th Ave. Now, Pena precinct was currently split in D5 and D7, and now it's being completely assigned to D5. And the portion of D7 going to D5 is bounded by Encanto Boulevard to McDowell Road and 91st Ave. to 86th Drive. Now we move on to D6. There are a total of three changes, and two of them we have already spoken about, which are in the northwestern part of the district. We talked about Glen and Greenwood. And in the southeast part, we have the Mayflower precinct, which is currently split in Districts 6 and 8, but it's now being assigned to D6. And the portion of D8 going to D6 is bound by Osborne Road to Thomas Road and 32nd Street to 40th Street. Moving on. Moving on to District 7, there are a total of eight changes. And three are in the northwestern part of the district, which we already talked about. And then there are two in the north-central part, which we talked about, and one in the northeastern part of the district that we talked about. And then there are two in the southwestern part of the district, and they are Levine and Olney. So Levine precinct is currently in D7, and it's being assigned to D8. And Olney is split in D7 and D8, and it's now being assigned to D8. And the portion of Levine, of Olney, is Baseline Road to Dobbin's Road and 43rd Avenue to 36th Ave. And let me also tell you about the streets that Levine is bounded by, Southern Avenue to Baseline Road and 43rd Ave. to 35th Ave. And with that, we move on to D8. And in D8, we have a total of four changes, and we have already talked about them. Two in the northeastern part, Creighton and Mayflower, and two in the southwestern part of the district that we just talked about, Levine and Olney. With this, I have described all the changes for all the districts. And now I just want to show you the overall recommended plan, that now we have been able to bring the maximum deviation down to 4.06%. And in the current districts, we have 31 precincts, which were split, and now we only have 22. We have a better compactness score, and we have only moved 20 precincts, and we have listed them here. And with that, I want to turn it over to you all for your questions and comments, and I want to thank you for your time.
Many thanks to everyone who worked on this and our community members who attended meetings. We had multiple in each council district. And we had a mapping tool that allowed residents to draw their own maps for submission. Thank you to people who put real time into it and were very thoughtful about the maps they created. We'll begin with council member questions, and we have four members of the public to testify, and then we'll go to the vice mayor for a motion. All right, why don't we start then with members of the public? We will start with Tim, followed by Eric in chambers, and then we'll go online.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tim Kenobi, with United Phoenix Firefighters, representing 2,700 members, many of whom live in Phoenix. We were involved in the process early on. We were attending most all of the round one meetings. We submitted a map. We attended most all of the round two meetings. And we can speak to the work of everybody involved, Ms. Spencer, Ms. Archibald, Mr. Myers, and Mr. and Mrs. Mather, to the work they did and the transparency. Like I said, we did submit a map, and the one that they produced most closely resembles ours, so we are in support of Alternative A. Thank you all.
Thank you. Eric is next, followed by Andre.
Hi there, Mayor, members of the council. Actually, I really came down here today because I just wanted to stand in this space again, having spent thousands of hours in this room. And you used to have to testify over there, under that big chandelier, and I never was entirely comfortable with that. But safer over here. My comments are really, I neither oppose nor embrace this, but my comments are really relative to a longstanding, I think, geographical issue with District 6. And having said that, I've lived in all four districts. I would feel well-represented by any and every council member up there today. This is not about representation or that. But the Barbell District, as they used to call it, I don't know if they still call it that. It's always been two districts, and it was created that way, you know, for a reason. With the changes in the growth and density of the Levine areas, I think a lot of that has gone away now, or those problems could be rectified. The 202 or the 101 South Mountain Loop effectively links Levine to it. And you really now have District 6, that's almost 20 miles tall, linked in the middle by, you know, a four or five-mile strip. And you've got areas that are like, you know, Arcadia and Indian School Corridor, characterized by redevelopment, gentrification in the area where I live. I'm actually right at the north of, I'm on the dividing line between 6 and 8. And South Owatonna has always been characterized by a northern border of South Mountain Regional Park and the southern border of the Gila River Indian Community. And by just pulling that west, that line west, and including Levine in that district, I think you'd solve what's been a problem over many, many years. That said, I realize you've got the plan before you, so I would guess, take this comment as the first comment in the 2033 redistricting process. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. Andre is next. Mariel Bel Praxima.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good morning, good afternoon, Mayor, council members, members of the City Manager's Office, and residents of Phoenix. This map is placed before you today by the redistricting team with the foreknowledge, since June 27, 2023, that it would draw out a political opponent of Councilwoman Guardado, who was up for reelection in 2024. They give you this map knowing it would remove a choice that thousands of District 5 residents chose in 2020, without even investigating whether not Hispanic blacks disproportionately supported my candidacy. Councilwoman Guardado has also been aware that this map will remove her political opponents. This thing created the opportunity for her political machine to artificially inflate the support of Map A, which is evident if one does a critical analysis of the public comments that you have before you in Attachment A. There's clear evidence of artificial support for Map A and potentially even fraudulent use of voters' names and addresses to push support via the website. The council should reject this map and demand one that fulfills the constitutional requirements without causing drama in our city by knowingly and willingly altering the political landscape of Phoenix District 5. Councilmember Guardado clearly has a conflict of interest in the vote and should declare it and refrain from voting. The headlines will either be, "Council adopts map that protects incumbent," or "Council demands map that does not remove voter choice." Phoenix needs to be the light in our divided country, and that can only happen if we strive to be number one in public trust. That means pursuing the strictest ethical standards, avoiding even the appearance of wrongdoing. You are all voting on this map knowing it will remove a political opponent of Councilwoman Guardado. The power is given to the council to adopt the map, not the City Manager's Office or an outside consulting firm. Thank you very much for listening to my comments.
Mariel Bel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mariel Bel Capillo, and I am the Berkeley Neighborhood and Square Association. I am inside District 5, and I, me and another 100 other neighbors, 140 other neighbors, send the message to the city. And we approved the Map A of the district. And I want to let you know, this district is a rainbow of cultures, ethnics. You can find all kinds of people in here. Blacks, Anglos, Asians, Indians. And we are like a beautiful mosquette of colors, languages, and we all have the freedom to choose what we think we need. And we send the message. We support the Map A. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes public testimony. And I think we had Mariel Bel registered to speak in Spanish, so thanks to everyone on that. We'll then go to the vice mayor for a motion. I move to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second. Councilman Waring.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to, we've mentioned this before. We have a very large district compared to other cities, so I know this wasn't the date or place or vote to discuss adding districts, but I think we had the consultants on retainer, I guess would be the word, for another couple of years. So is there a plan? Or can I ask for them to look at that going forward?
Mayor, members of the council, and Councilman Waring. The request to look at adding additional council districts, as you know, that would require a change of the code. It's required by charter. So right now, our charter says that we have a mayor plus eight council members. So if we were going to add additional members, we'd want to take that to Phoenix voters. Councilman Waring, as you stated, we do have our consultants onboard on retainer for a few more years. And so what we're voting on today, the, the new boundaries take effect in January. And then at the start of the new year, we would get in and meet with each of the count, with the mayor and council offices to see what your pleasure is in regards to adding additional council districts, and then we would come up with that plan and how we want to move forward with that. How many council members do we want to add? What do we want that makeup to look like? And then planning as far as when we would bring it forward to voters, and then also when it would take effect. So those are the discussions that we'd like to sit down and, and have those conversations with you, each of you. And we can do that as early as the start of the year.
Thank you. Mayor, just to follow up, and I don't have any kind of defined plan. I would assume we would probably want to add even numbers, so two or four, to get the number back down to some, I mean, we'd have to add a lot to get down to most of our peer cities in terms of size of the districts. So, and also maybe a listening session or whatever we call those, you know, so that if there's public input, because people did mention this, I think from, if not every district, most of the districts, at least a couple of people mentioned, hey, this is something we should probably look at. So I know there have been news reports about it and whatnot, but it's just something I think we should consider. So I guess you'll let me know when it makes sense to bring it up again, and we'll go from there. I knew today was not the time, so I'm saying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just, I want to start with thanking everyone who was so deeply involved in this process. I don't think I've ever seen a bigger binder than the one Denise was carrying around all summer. So thank you all, and to the consultants, and Chris, Ginger, all of you for working so hard on this. I knew going into this that District 7 was the largest district with 218,000 and then some residents. So we, you know, we've, I think we've had the most changes to our district. We had many community meetings where we heard feedback about the desire for more compact districts, and I think we began to move forward on that with small tweaks to precincts that I share with Districts 4, 5, and 8. I also hope that in the future, we, we may consider more council districts, I think, when it comes to responding to constituent requests with the budgets that we have. And the very, people are often, I think, one of the most common pieces of feedback I get from constituents is how surprised they are at how small our teams are for how large the districts are. Most, you know, our districts are almost the equivalent of the city of Tempe. So I do think that's something that we should consider in the future. And then I also just think one of the more interesting conversations that came up during this was this debate between, is it better to have multiple council members representing an area? Or is it, you know, to bring better, more policy ideas to the table, or are more compact districts better? And I do think potentially in the future, this question around more council districts can help. It can be very, you know, I think, I personally love representing the five very distinct areas of District 7, but it can also be very challenging because they are often five very, very different districts with very different needs. So I think all around, we ran a really good process, and I'm really proud to be voting for these new maps today. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastor.
I just want to say thank you, because this has been a long, well, I think it, not a long, long process, but time-consuming process, and also tedious and having to deal with the public and us and saying yay, nay, no. It is very challenging, especially when you're trying to put a puzzle together and make it happen. And we did hear about split of districts, have, having one representative. But like I said in one of my council meeting, or one of the meetings is, sometimes it's better to have two representatives because you have two voices and two united voices. And sometimes it's good when you have three, because then, three people then can push for what is needed in that district. And so as we move forward, we will be, I, I believe it's to be cognizant of all those types of ways of looking at a district, especially when one precinct is larger, one of the larger precincts in an area may possibly need to be split. I look at that as like kind of the downtown area. And having more voices in the towntown area then provides more resources or more ways of looking how that space is, is, is activated in many different ways, and serving many different constituents of all many different backgrounds and economic backgrounds. But I want to thank you. I also want to thank Pretty for being here, and Sam, because I would make some jokes on my virtual comments because Pretty was always in front doing the maps. And I was like, well, where's Sam? And then he would pop through. So I'm glad to see them here in person. I don't think Sam likes my jokes, but that's okay. But thank you.
We'll go to Councilwoman Stark and then Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, ma, thank you, Mayor. I just, first off, want to thank staff and our consultants for all the hard work on the redistricting plan. It was a lot of work, and I appreciate everything they did. But I still want us to pursue the discussion of additional council seats, as, as Councilman Waring has brought up. I do believe that we, at a local level, impact the everyday lives of our residents and businesses, and therefore they deserve good representation. For example, when we get a call because the trash wasn't picked up, it, it, it needs to be picked up. We need to make sure we're providing that customer service. And we get calls, not like that every day, but we get calls frequently, and I think they deserve the representation. They deserve a conversation with their elected officials. So I do hope we pursue the discussion of additional council seats. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just take a moment to thank and to emphasize the importance of community involvement in the decision-making process for redistricting in our city. First, I would like to say thank you to all those in the community who actively participated in our efforts. Your valuable comments have been essential in shaping the redistricting plan. Our team in District 5 is dedicated to working closely with the community and neighborhoods throughout this process, ensuring that their voices were heard and their concerns were, were addressed. While redistricting and change can be a challenge, we're excited to welcome new areas in District 5, such as Desert Sky Mall and southwestern parts of Maryville. I believe that these additions will contribute positively to the diversity of our district and create opportunities for collaboration and growth. I also know that losing parts of our districts, such as parts of the Royal Palm Neighborhood and the Creston Mall area, can be difficult after doing that ribbon cutting that we just did at that skate park at Solano Park. But I know that it's going into good hands. However, I want to assure you that every decision was made after careful consideration of various factors, including population, distribution, and community cohesion. Thanks to the dedicated city staff and consultants who have worked diligently throughout this process. Ginger, I don't know how many times you and I were on the phone just going back and forth. So thank you for all of your hard work. Chris, I know you want to come back. We're ready to take you back if you're ready to come back. So thank you so much for continuing to care, to care for the city. Pretty and Sam, thank you guys so much for, for your patience and, you know, us coming in, and, and hopefully we weren't that difficult to work with. So thank you guys so much for all of your hard work. And all, all of the staff. Denise, thank you for making sure that this process was transparent and just keeping us in line and making sure that we were always doing the right thing. Thank you for everyone's, everyone's hard work on this. And I'm, I'm very happy to see that we've definitely heard the community when they said they wanted to have the districts more com, a little bit more compacted, communities more together. I think we achieved a lot of that. We went from 32 to 21. So I think that's, that's a great, a great accomplishment. So just want to thank everyone for all of their hard work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any final comments? Councilwoman Hatch-Washington.
I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments and say thank you to the staff and the consultants. I know it was no small lift. It was a heavy task, and I think, thank you for the professionalism and the manner in which you made sure that all members of the community were able to understand the process, understand what to expect for, from it, and made sure they were engaged. I think we received a, a large number of community-based, sorry, resident-based maps. And I think it's because of your efforts and making sure that it was a process that everyone felt a part of. So I wanted to say thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hatch-Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. That concludes today's business. We are adjourned.
And just like that, we're done and out of the tentatious.